Yes.
Okay.
Is it gonna stay?
Ricky, let me know when we're good.
We are live. Okay, it is seven oh five. I am going to call this meeting to order. First agenda item is the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks. That always sounds great when there's more people in attendance, doesn't it?
Yeah.
All right. If I could please ask the clerk to call the roll.
Trusty Pappy.
Here.
Trusty Hawk.
Here.
Trusty Evangeline.
There.
President Kirkie.
Here.
Trusty Doorward.
Eric.
Trusty Bart.
Here.
Trusty Miami.
Here.
Right, hearing that we have a quorum, we are set to continue. The next item is going to be the consent agenda, including the minutes of June fifteenth. General fund, water and sewer invoices, and temporary class B retail licenses for the Warrior Gridiron Club.
Want to approve their consent agenda.
All right, I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? If not, I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, next section is for public comments. Five minutes a person. Anything not related to the agenda? All right, hearing on, we will move on. Report on village committees. We'll start with the park and rep committee.
All right, so we had a meeting feels like forever ago. Covered a lot of things that night. First topic was the mud run. Everything seems to be going well or parks or our BPW team is working on the obstacles. We're getting these ride bikes ordered and put together and everything seems to be status quo for now. So hopefully fingers crossed everything's good.
How many are signed up so far?
A hundred and twenty-six.
That's big.
Yeah.
No.
So I'm super excited if anybody would like to volunteer in the day of. We're always happy to have more volunteers at the obstacles and administration. Admin tables and everything, so that would be good. The next thing we talked about was movie nights. We are going to try and do two movie nights in the village this summer. We are continuing to look for sponsors. I have one that sounds promising for August, September timeframe. I am looking for a sponsor still for a July movie. The soccer baseball associate has agreed to sell concessions as a fundraiser for themselves. So that's great. We're going to do both at Fireman's Park this year. Really excited for those. We talked about the holiday tree lighting, just to kind of keep it on the agenda and top of mind, so we don't forget about it. Sounds like our DPW team is going to do the decorating for us. Yay, go guys.
You can see it, it's new news to Brandon.
Bruce loves Christmas, so hopefully we can come on some support for Bruce too.
Yeah, we need.
Should be fun. Next thing we talked about was fun before the board for next year, the hundred and fiftieth anniversary. I am creating a subcommittee for the event planning and that. We're just starting. I've got a handful of volunteers. So we're going to be putting together our first meeting here in the next few weeks and we'll start brainstorming and beep everybody in the home apprised just what's going on. The pay-to-play disc golf course is starting to move forward, which is great. We've got the QR, we're setting up the QR codes. We've got the payment situated. Start making signs and hopefully get them up towards the end of the month. And the last thing we talked about was a basketball court upgrade. As some of you may know, we talked about the basketball association with the school and they wanted to upgrade one of the basketball courts in town to try and entice more playing and more involvement in the community. So we are in discussions on that for designing and just very beginning stages of brainstorming, so.
Very good.
Anything else for trustee Baris? All right, if not, we'll move on to the public works committee.
We had a meeting. Christopher and Eric were there and discussed role issues in their and the rating that the state will give to us and I guess I would just hand it to you for what you have to show them.
I will be presenting on that in a couple of agendas.
Eric, I had made a, when we were talking, you talked about this chemical that we're putting in the pipe. And I had questioned you about the spot on my son's truck and stuff like that, that this chemical that you put in the pipe necessarily preserve that actually ends up rotting then, correct?
Uh, most probably more or less blazo. So the soil is so capable, it's supposed to sequester the iron in pipes, sort of, you know, system along and cooling the cast iron and not our ice from deteriorating or breaking, but too much or over being can be opposite. Instead of a nice coat on the inside.
Thanks for the big one. Your opinion on that product is?
My personal opinion on adding any chemical into any system. I don't like because when you add chemical to the product, you normally have to add chemical back there.
Yeah, and then we also talked about during that meeting. Water pressure, the differential and our sewer. The size of our sewer and where problems were down on Highland and things like that. Sure, this is all going to get addressed during the presentation. So the other things are the generator that would be needed to be upgraded to that around tap our plant on the sewer. There was portable generator for, we talked about portable generators for just getting into the building and not bringing doors and things like this. But all these will come up, I'm sure, again, so I'll leave it at that.
All right, anything else for our public works committee chairman? All right, thank you. Moving on, we'll go to the art board.
Um, after that, we approved a fence for number twelve. And we talked about some adjustments to the ordinance governing the art board and its procedures. And we made recommendations, which we'll see in the action items coming on.
Anything else for the art board chairperson? We will move on then to the 2023 road and utility study. I just want to point out and let everybody know, you know, obviously staff and Chris has been working on this pretty hard here. This is informational really only. We're just taking a look at everything that came up with that. And then from there, we will decide how to move forward in the future. So I will hand it off to our administrator.
Sure, just give me one moment to get this set up here. Hey, look at that. It didn't take me ten minutes like it did at Public Works, so that's great. All right, well, some of you guys have heard this presentation. I did a draft of it with the public works committee. Eric helped out a lot with that, so I thank him. He's, you can feel free to jump in, whatever you would like. This is the 2050 transportation network sustainability plan. A good way to look at this is that we're pretty close to 2025 now, since it's kind of an outlook for the next 25 years. Nothing in here is binding, nothing in here is set in stone. It's all just information to help us better plan as we budget and plan our capital expenses moving forward. I would do want to give some thank yous. Eric, obviously, is our DPW director. Brandon, his right-hand man. Melissa, who reviewed the numbers. Michelle, who did the editing for me, and then our other partners throughout the county strand and our GIS coordinator, of course. So what you have before you is a bound document that goes into a lot more detail. What I'll be talking about today will be very high level, but I encourage you to look through that plan and try to read and, you know, retain every word of it, because it's serious stuff. This is, this is probably something that maybe has been looked at casually over the years. But this is information that's really a full grasp of your entire utility system, your roads, your sewer, your water, and your stormwater. So just going through what led us to this point, the, you guys, the village board had directed me to create a five-year CIP plan on the roads. That's what led us towards this direction. As soon as we started digging into it, there was multiple areas that we found that we needed to address. So that's why the plan very quickly went beyond the five-year scope. So in the document, you'll see there's an introduction to purpose section. There's a methodology. There's a section about road improvements, funding the plan, policy decisions, and then our overall summary that we'll go through. So the first section is methodology. So we took a look at a full inventory of all of the streets, every street within the village. We took a look at pazer ratings, which is how you grade pavement conditions. We took a look at traffic volumes, took a look at utilities, other planning considerations, and then overall project costs. So the first we're going to look at is street inventory. This map should look very familiar to you. This is a map of the village. All of the black lines are streets. The yellow area is what is within our jurisdiction. Couple notes, though, is the county does have responsibility for Fredonia Ave as it goes through here. And there's some sections such as on the north and the south end where it's half and half, where it's, there's some village jurisdiction or there's some town jurisdiction. Other than that, these are all the roads that are within the jurisdiction of the village. I will note, because trustee Doorward had brought it up. Apparently, the board also passed that there's this little section here of driveway that leads to our plant that should be designated as a road. The state does not currently have that listed as such, so that's something we're going to have to address. All right, now we're going to get into some fun data here. So these are pazer ratings. So a pazer rating is how you grade the pavement condition of a road. It's rated from one to 10. 10 being the smoothest ride that you ever had, one being you're driving on gravel and rocks. So you can see here on the pavement condition lifecycle, we have failed, poor, good, very good, excellent. As we review the data here, what I want you to take a look at is, is think about maintenance. So when you do a new road, right away, when you pave it, it's a 10. Very quickly over the years due to snow and other weather conditions, that condition is going to, is going to wear down. There's a 40% drop area here between excellent and fair, that if there was ever a time to do like such a mill and overlay or a seal, that's the time to capture it, to extend the life of the road. If anything goes really beyond to this fair condition as well, as we'll look at, it's, it's kind of too late, right? We were going to have to look at reconstruction, which costs a heck a lot more than any sort of seal or mill and overlay might cost. So we took a look at the inventory of the roads. You'll see there's different mileages and percentages. So these pazer ratings were just updated this year. Your DPW director and I went through the village. We, along with trustee Pappy, we had a great old time. And we literally graded every single road in the village, and this is what we came up with. Look, using the color code scale, green, it means that there, it's in pretty darn good condition. Yellow means that it's average, and red means that we should probably do something about them because they're, it's pretty choppy. So to give you a good example, there is this area here in front of the DPW shop that you guys might have driven on. It's pretty broken up and destroyed. There's an area here as we go to Marie Kraus Park, where we all know it's literally gravel, right? So it's literally a one and two. There's areas up in the new subdivision where if you kept going, you're going to drive off the road and on two rocks. That's what's red there. So those are the areas that we would address, but you can see in the overall ratings, it's actually, you're actually not too bad. And I don't want to paint a pessimistic picture. As you guys know, I come from the city of West Bend. Our numbers are, are really bad. I mean, I would say 70% of our roads are probably a six or lower. So hopefully, nobody from West Bend is watching this. But you guys are actually in pretty good condition. And you can tell that just by the sixes, right? So the amount of road, road mileage that is rated a six. If that's almost, it's more than 56, sorry, more than 50% of your roads are covered in a pretty, pretty good area. So that's something that you should feel pretty proud about, and now we're just going to try to keep that going. One thing to note about mileage, you might be looking at that number and say, wait a second, we don't have 40 miles of road in the village. You're correct. You do not have 40 miles of road. Pazer ratings, the way it's inventoried with the state is lane miles and then sections of lane miles. So in the state's eyes, you have about 40 miles of, of sections of lanes, not overall mileage of roads. So don't, you need, no need to panic too much. Correct, correct. So this is a lot, but is there any questions on pazer ratings? Okay. So next up here, we're going to look at traffic volumes. So traffic volumes was researched a couple of different ways. There is the general traffic count that the state does. There's also traffic count that the county does. And then there's, I would say, very rough estimate traffic count numbers that various policing authorities do mainly to check for speeders and things like that. So we combine all of that data into what you see here. It should be no surprise that your main drag through town, Fredonia Avenue, is the busiest one. Everybody goes up and down that road. The second most busiest, which might, I think it was a little bit of a surprise that we looked at it, was Highland. So think about how much traffic maybe goes on and off the highway, goes to the gas stations here, goes to the school. Maybe, maybe they go off here and then they go down to Fredonia Avenue. And then the other area is over here, the section of, of Martin Avenue. This seems to be like the main thoroughfare that cars are using. And then you can see that extend with the yellow, and then green is pretty much residential traffic, everybody else leaving and going to their homes every day. So this is just another data point that we looked at when we were looking at roads. Any questions on that? All right, next up is age of utilities. So another factor we looked at was the overall age of the utility. And you'll find later on that the age of the utility doesn't necessarily mean that it needs to get replaced. So a good example is that there are sections of Milwaukee here that are between 71 and 100 years old that are not failing, that are actually okay. And there's areas that are green that need to get work done. So don't let that number skew you too much. But again, we wanted to point out here is the overall age of the, of the utilities. Red is the oldest, then orange, then yellow, and then green is fairly new. All right, so when we looked at utilities, your DPW director and I, you know, really tried to hone in on what we're, what we're going to be the good measurements for utilities. How are we going to know whether a utility needs replacement or needs to, you know, be addressed in some way, shape, or form. And so what we came down to was for water, we would look at the diameter of the pipes and the amount of breaks. And for sewer, we would look at the type of pipe that's laid and the diameter. Water, the reason we're looking at diameter is because it should come as no surprise throughout the village, there is different circumferences in like pretty much every single road. So as the water goes through the pipes in different pressure points, it creates more or less pressure, which is causing breaks throughout the system. So that was important there. Obviously, we tracked the number of breaks. And then on the sewer side, as you'll see in your packet, it used to be that you used petrified clay for all of the pipes that you have within your municipality. It was very popular at the time. Well, fast forward 30, 40, 50 years later, guess what? Clay wears down and it wears down pretty fast. So you're seeing a switch in everything that was new from clay to PVC piping. And so any chance that we can get to get in there, replace that clay piping with PVC, we're going to take advantage of it. And then you see diameter there for the same reason again, just pressure throughout the system. So what this map is showing you is the number of breaks that have happened throughout the village. The thicker the line, the more breaks. So of note here is Highland is a, is seeing a lot of breaks. I mean, just in the time that Eric and I have been here, is that where you've at least had two, right, in that area? Okay, so there's been a number of breaks in the last couple of years. You see, there's been a lot of breaks up in that section of Martin. And something surprising is, if you remember, this was a green. This little section here in front of the fire department, but we're having a lot of breaks because of impacts through the system here. So just again, a data point to note as we looked through this. Any questions on utilities? All right, another one we looked at was planning considerations. So the areas in green are where we hope there's going to be a lot of growth, right? We know that in the south end, there's the industrial park. We have plans and developments that this whole area is going to get built out, and it's going to be awesome for the village. On the east side, we have a large area that's within the jurisdiction of the village that we would love to see developed with whatever might come there. And then we have the north end where we've been proving plats, so we should see continual residential growth there too. So we took into that, took these areas into account, and then looked back at the data for the roads and utilities, what we need to address that narrowed down the areas of key kind of chokeholds, areas that we need to address sooner than later if we want to see these other areas develop in the village. All right, my next slide here is on annual maintenance and estimated project costs. So what you have here is an example, just an example of what an annual maintenance budget might look like. I, if you look at your budgets in the past, and some of you have been here for quite a long time, I think you see different years, different amounts were thrown at different projects, right, in the hopes to address this. So this is an example of just a steady annual, let's say we had $100,000 to put towards road maintenance, what would we do with it? So out of $100,000, half of that would go towards sealing. So again, that's catching those roads before they fall off the deep end to extend the life of the pavement. After that, you have mill and overlay projects, you have cracks and joint sealing, you have spot repairs, and then you have curb and gutter replacements. Just to compare you to a like-sized municipality, the village of Belgium, their current budget this year is 126,000 for these types of projects. So it's pretty, pretty much in the ballpark. And then we asked our engineer to come up with an average cost measurement that we can use per, per lane, I'm sorry, per foot in the, in the lane of the road. And so I should note that while these numbers seem high, they also include our engineering costs. So these were the individual numbers that we used for the recommendations that are going to be coming, coming for you next. You can see the biggest cost are things that involve utilities, but if we only need to mill and overlay a road, then it's a whole lot cheaper. Any questions on the costs?
Did you find out whether or not the restoration costs were in the?
Yes, and they did estimate, it was like a 4% cost for, for them to, yeah.
That cost.
Yep. Yep, so they factored, there's a certain percentage in there. Yep. You got it. Okay. That's, that's per lane foot. So for every foot of lane, it's $365. Yep.
Out of the annual maintenance expenses, what is Eric and Coop going to be doing? I mean, out of that, like the spot repair, stuff like that, or is this all stuff done?
I mean, as much as we could do in-house, we will. Obviously, we have limits of staff and equipment and abilities and things like that, but you're going to. Yep, so that, well, the numbers on which side? The numbers on this side?
Well, yeah, it's really 50 grand, I mean.
That's just the most costly thing out of all of these. So that, that's really all, all what determined that. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Eric, do you have anything else to add to this question? Any else? All right, so let's get into some fun stuff. And I don't have my booklet in front of me, so I'm sorry. Who's could I steal here? Thank you. All right, so if you turn to page. All right, we're going to look at page 16, which is planned road improvements. Is everybody there? All right, so this is split up into three different sections, and you'll notice that there's no dates tied to these because this isn't, again, this isn't set in stone. This is more so a, based on the data that we found, the priorities that we would address these items. So the first area is complete reconstruction. That means we would tear up everything from bottom to top, replace it all. And what we found that the highest priority is Highland Avenue. So Highland Avenue, again, is the little thoroughfare over there. You see a lot of traffic there with the, with the school district, gas station, other commercial businesses. We have a lot of utility issues that are over there, especially in the corner that leads towards the school. That's causing issues throughout the entire system in the northeast area of the village. Our hope is that by reconstructing that whole area is that it's just solve other problems throughout the system. So again, if you were to tell me tomorrow which road are we going to reconstruct, I would say Highland Avenue would be the one to do. After that, you see Wheeler Ave, which is in front of the DPW garage, and then a section of North Milwaukee Street where we've had a lot of failures there too. So again, that's complete reconstruction. There are some areas in there where it might be that maybe we only had one or two utility issues, maybe the pavement's really bad. The logic goes, well, if you're going to dig it up, then you might as well dig it all up and just replace it while you're there. Why replace a line only to dig it up the next year, right? The next area is utility-only replacements, which means that the pavement is doing fairly well, and we would literally bore new utility lines underneath the road. The number one candidate for that is north, is another section of North Milwaukee Street. Priority two is Manor Drive, and then priority three is Fillmore. And then last is a pavement-only area where we'd only need to be addressing the pavement. The utilities underneath are fairly okay. And that number one priority is Tower Drive for Metalark to Industrial and a section of Industrial Drive. Priority two is Heather Lane, and priority three is Cedar Valley Road as it heads out towards the town. So again, what you see in this broken up are the estimates of those costs based off of the calculations done by our engineer. And they would just be placeholder numbers that we would put in our long-term CIP, whether the board or administration chooses to act it next year, act on it 10 years from now, at least we have numbers in mind for, for tackling those costs. So you might say, Chris, wow, this is a lot of flipping money. How are we going to pay for this? We'll have no fear. My next section is all about funding the plan. And I'll be candid with you, there's some, some things in here that are great. And there's some answers in here that you're going to look at me and go, we're not doing that, Chris. And that's okay. I gave you all of the options, all the options that are available to Wisconsin municipalities that you could use. So on page 18, you'll see that, start that list, and I won't go through all of these too much. Bless you. The first option is borrowing. We know that you can borrow, add that debt onto your levy, and then continue to make payments after the project is completed. Next is L-Rip Funding, that's a local road improvement program. You guys utilized that in the past for a section of Wilson that just got done. STP Funding, that's federal grant dollars. That's the grant that we just applied for a couple of months ago, which, by the way, fingers crossed, we might hear about that grant next week. So hopefully, I come to you with good news soon. You have utility funds. We have a separate water and sewer utility that can be utilized to help pay for these costs. And then you get into some other options. You could create a stormwater utility. You already have a sewer utility, you already have a water utility. Well, you technically could create another utility if you wanted to, just to address stormwater items. You have another option of TIF districts. We have a TIF district that you all know, know about. Right now, we're going to be funding road and utility projects within the TID. Well, did you know that you can expense projects in an area radius outside of the TID if you wanted to? Let's say there's an area along Tower Drive that we want to address. Well, we could use funding from the TID in order to tackle that item. Next up, you have federal infrastructure grants. So we all hope that more and more monies are going to come from the sky and fall from the federal government. Well, there's options for those grants when you qualify. I would add that there's a lot of restrictions typically tied to these. I would add that there's a lot of restrictions typically tied to these funds. So we just wanna be wary of that. Next is GTA funding. So this is the transportation aid that we get. It's an annual aid that we are allotted from the state. The governor's budget, by the way, I could say was going to increase this aid by two percent. And then the governor just vetoed it before he signed it, and we're no longer getting those funds. So we'll just put that out there in the public either. Special assessments, you could specially assess for a project, right? Nobody likes that, but if you really wanted to, you could specially assess for the cost of majority of a project onto the abutting neighbors. They might love you for that, but you can do it. Next option is a wheel tax. And yes, we all love hearing that, but that's beginning, getting more and more popularity. The way wheel tax works is it's per registration. So when you think about a big business that might have a lot of vehicles that they're parking on their lot, they might be causing a lot of traffic in the village. This now puts that liability on them, saying, hey, you guys are the reasons that you're wearing down a road. Maybe you should pay more of a quote unquote fair share for that. Another way of doing wheel taxes by establishing a transportation utility. Yes, it's another utility fund, just like water, just like sewer, just like the proposed storm, stormwater. You could do one just for transportation and charge a fee onto your residents as well. And I think that is it. Any questions on those funding options?
The way I read it, if the governor didn't take those funds out, he still did it. The unspent funds.
Yeah, maybe I can look into it. I just read something today too, it's very, very new. So fingers crossed they didn't. Yeah, yeah, I saw that there, yep. All right, so then, well, the last section here on page twenty is policy decisions. So these are just things for you to think about as we, you know, move throughout the summer, as we get into budget season, as we look at our cap, capital budget moving forward. First one is where do you place a well maintained roadway system in your priorities? We got a lot of priorities here, right? We talked about parks and rec stuff, we have public safety needs. We have other public infrastructure that's falling apart that we need to replace, right? So where do roads and utilities fall in your overall priorities? Next section is how important is a well functioning sewer and water system, right? Maybe you don't wanna have the Rolls Royce of utility systems. That's okay, not everybody does. Next one is what minimum roadway condition or pager rating is acceptable, right? We are sitting at about an average of a five or six, maybe that's our norm, maybe we're okay with that. Maybe we wanna go above and beyond, maybe we wanna let it, you know, muddle down to Westfuns numbers. What source of funding is acceptable, right? Do you, are you okay that we have to borrow dollars almost for every single capital project that we do? Or do we wanna explore other cash on hand methods? And then the next question is how much of a burden should be passed directly under the property owners themselves? That's definitely a political question to answer. Should the village increase funding to keep up with inflation? I don't think these numbers are gonna go away anytime soon. Costs keep going up for roads, and we're gonna get less bang for our buck if we keep our spending the same. And then finally, are you willing to base your roadway selections based on data and not local pressure? You're all elected officials, I've been an elected official, I get it. You might have residents who call you and say, hey, my road is the worst in the village. You have to address it. But you might have looked at this map and said, that's a green road, what are they complaining about, right? You need to base your decisions really based on that data that we're providing and not just because someone says they have the worst road in the village. So then finally, on the last page is my executive summary that just gives an overview of the things that are covered in this report. Thank you so much. So with that, as the president said, we're not looking for any decisions today. I'm happy to answer questions that you might have. All I'm really looking for today is that if you agree that this is important, I'll take a nodding of heads. And then as we head into budget season and we're looking at our capital improvement list, know that as we talk with our financial advisors and we see what's money, what money is available. These are the priorities that we're gonna be looking at for the village. So thank you so much, and I'm happy to answer any other questions. Trustee Pappy, yes, sir? No problem.
Public works, why? Clarify, all this stuff has come up for the running this week, but. We have serious issues. We also have serious issues with water and, you know, to come through the village. I just hope that everybody in the board understands what he just went through right now. And what Eric is dealing with and could possibly have to deal with if something went down where we had a. You know, something. I, I, I think that's very important. You had stressed it many times. I think that we need to understand that as our board are in the struggle around the sewer and water is getting there. I mean, it's like in dire. But we have them.
And any other question that I can try to answer?
Everyone read the press today that the port rushing is being forced into sixty seven percent of water rate increase by the huge fifty. And. We're gonna have to take a serious look at utility rates this year. Our, our water services, and that's usually not much. We are probably a three million dollars. Updates and we've got space here for third point, which is about two hundred five. Plus we have replacements, we've got. We're gonna have a lot of money down there, and right now we're just barely covering costs.
And that's a good point. I, I was very candid with trustee Pappy when he came in, I think after the first time you heard the presentation and, and you said, oh, we got all these projects, what are we gonna do? And I, I told you, I, I hope that you remember this presentation, and I hope you all remember this presentation, when we come to you with real. Utility rate increases and options. Because obviously, yes, it hurts, nobody likes to pay more money to the government, I get that. But that's dollars that can be used towards fixing and addressing these problems, so.
Right, and I also wanted to both Eric and Christopher and Barry force right this board. What issues that we have at hand, and we have to take.
Yeah, it is.
Pretty sure. All right, I do wanna say thank you. I really do appreciate all the work we've done to this. I know it's time consuming and there's different, you know, obligations that we need to meet as staff. But this is one of the most important things I think that we've done in my humble opinion so far. So again, thank you to staff, Eric, water utility, administration, all that stuff, for putting this together.
Happy to help.
All right. That was fun. Now that we're done with that, we will move on to the next section, which is items for discussion and or action. Yeah, the first. Item that we have relates to the art board and the composition of it, so. Okay, I have a motion and a second. As far as discussion goes, so what came of this, we were looking at the ordinance and kinda really seeing what the different things in it were. And, and one of the things that jumped out to me and I asked the, the village staff to do is, there was some kind of goofy language in there that, that made it so that basically a super majority of members. Needed to be there in order to hold a meeting. Whereas everybody else, every other committee in the village we have is just a simple majority to hold that meeting. So. Based on that, I asked, I asked to have this ordinance change so that it goes from four members to a majority of members. And then also looking at alternates in the summertime or any time related that others can't attend. So that's where this came from.
No, I don't know how I feel about this yet. Just because I know we have that forum for regular, I mean, we do have that forum for. Committee meetings, I mean. If, for example, if we were going off just a majority, if one person showed up for a committee meeting, if this was, that'd be a majority, correct?
No.
You need a majority of the committee members.
So majority means a, a, a forum.
Right, there's three members on a committee and only two show up, that's a point.
There's one.
Yeah, but this is just for art.
Just for, I know, I'm just saying, wherever you draw the line here, but I'm trying to understand. I, I don't, that's why I'm, I don't know.
I think, I think your, your clerk has a comment to do.
I just wanted to clarify that right now, the art board had, is a five member board. Mostly comprised of citizen members. And what we've been seeing this summer is that residents are coming in kind of right before their construction begins. And, and again, their emergency is not our emergency. But, you know, we would like to accommodate their, them and their schedules. So we've been calling these meetings kind of on short notice. It's been tough trying to get ahold of everyone and asking them to come in on short notice. So we've been lucky both times getting in touch with everyone. But of the five member board right now, four of them have to show up. So the suggestion is that we move the forum from four member forum to a three, and then appoint an alternate. Yeah, if we can't manage to string together three members.
He's not really.
Yeah. They're appointed to three years on the standard.
So the point is, is that there's no other committee in your ordinance that is this restrictive about a forum. I don't know why the art board requires four out of five people have to be in attendance for a meeting to happen. But that's what's throwing things off. So this is really bringing this in line with every other committee within the village.
I think it was like that, so that at least one of the members of the board was in favor of this. Cause you'd have three citizens, remember?
One member of this board.
Yeah, a member of the village board would, would cast an attending board. Cause you could have three citizens members approach something. And the people on the board. It would be, it would be recommended to board, you know, if you, if it's solid. I think that was the thinking, that they wanted to make sure that at least one of the members of the village board voted in to accommodate. But I don't think that's all that necessary because we do have a ton of sense, I think.
Yeah. People on that board have been on there for a long, long time.
Well, I'd be confident we're gonna get three people to show up at every meeting, and that's easier than four.
So, so what would be the alternative, I guess?
I'm sure the notice are given for holding these meetings.
Well, it's like any other government meeting, yeah. Technically, we can call a meeting in twenty four hours if we wanted to. We don't try to do that, but.
I thought architectural board met regularly at one point.
They have like a floating set day, but they only meet when, when.
So they have a, a set meeting, I think it's the third Wednesday every month. We usually, well, I guess in my tenure, we've only called that meeting if there was something for them to discuss. The last two that we called have been outside of that set Wednesday. Because again, residents, we're trying to accommodate residents' schedule.
You know, when I did a subdivision, and I'll make it really quick. When I had a, for instance, color of, you know, what you're gonna put on for siding for your houses, windows and things like that, architectural. Chingles and ordinances avoided by the subdivision. It was a set meeting, and if you wanted to hurry that up, you actually had to pay more money to have a set meeting. Twenty four hours to me is unacceptable to try to get anybody there.
So twenty four hours is what the open ending law described. We would try not to do that under all circum, under most circumstances. So our obligation is to post outside the twenty four hours, but we would try to get things organized in advance of that.
Could you do an application thing, you know?
There is, there is.
There is, what I mean is twenty four hours, I mean, this application could be done. Fourteen days prior.
Yeah, the posting requirements are, well, open meeting law requirements are twenty four hours. Typically, people come, you know, before that. I think the instance that we had wasn't there somebody that was putting in something and they had a contractor coming and they didn't realize or something?
Well, I think for the first one, I wasn't around for that process, but the one twelve Uber court, she came in the week before. Her project was going to begin.
Which again, it's not, it's not our problem necessarily, but just trying to be more, I guess, more accommodating. And that's kinda where I was looking at this.
I think they have a deadline of a week before the meeting or something, thirty days before the meeting. All material must be meant so that you can do prep, that's another thing. I'm not sure if there's a, a timing like that directly, perhaps it could be. Things for the monthly art board can't be, the Monday fire too, or something like that. To do something like that.
So that's definitely a goal internally that I would love for us to live by for every one of our meetings. But there's things that are gonna come up, right? And, and that's what this kinda addresses.
And I, and I think as far as that goes too, I mean, one of the things as we try to grow as a village, if we do start having, you know, things that are coming in and again, somebody else's emergencies and ours. But if somebody says, oh crap, I forgot to go before art board, I'm gonna build this house, and I need this approval before I can start digging. Well, now if they're, if they're waiting another month, that's, that's another month that they're not constructing. And I think Bruce and I both understand that can be a real problem as well as.
Probably need more than twenty four hours.
We need more than twenty four hours, absolutely, yeah.
Architecture board people are the members that I like in the air, that's paid, correct? You know, kinda.
You've changed, you've changed it.
So everyone that we call now. We pay our, our citizen members and the board reps.
Yeah, that, the actual board members won't be paid, they'll do pay the salary. You know, when it's, when you guys are like to be, a salary, like the rest of us. So we, you're not telling them where the meeting is at. But the citizen members, I believe, should get a, a compensation and appreciation for actually doing it of a long time and everything.
That's not getting addressed here tonight. You guys have only made that decision.
I, I would hate to see those seats for citizen members taken away. It's hard enough to get people to fill those vacancies now.
That's, yeah, that's not what's being talked about.
Well, I'm just saying, it's part of it, we're having a hard enough time with people that are volunteering, paying to be here, to get up here.
So that's why we need less people to make a core, which is what this is addressing.
And more time.
What's your reservations on it, Josh?
I don't know, I just don't, I don't know, it just doesn't sit well with me, it just doesn't. I don't know why exactly, but I mean, if you're talking about something, I mean, I've seen stuff where we've had to go through variance. Committee's over seven inches, you know, it's not, you've got four people there, you got three. I mean, four people, whatever, I mean, now you could enter a tie and I go up and fail, I guess, but three, I just, I don't know. I just have a real hard time grasping, it's like it's a volunteer thing, you're at a term, you get paid to be there. If you're asked, I mean, we all know in Wisconsin constructions in the summertime, but people are also busy in the summertime.
Yeah, but it's not like you don't know you're gonna do it with like twenty four hours.
Yeah, that's a very occasion to know that.
I understand the reservation too, Joshua, if I'm sitting here thinking about it in terms of committees that we have, right? If now a forum goes even lower, right? But I think in this instance where we have five members or whatever it is, I think it's not, brings it into line with pretty much every other committee that we have. That's what I'm getting at.
Yeah, cause there's a lot of important decisions that are made at the architect's board, so it's nice to have more of them. The map and three, if I isn't here to talk. I mean, I get it, totally get it, but I just can't look at my, I'm just not sitting over here.
Are there any other questions, discussion? I am gonna call the vote.
The art board looks to show during anything, and actually decided that these changes were.
That they were appropriate? It's written on all the members, or just?
All the members are just, you're voting and changing.
Four members.
Whoever wishes to allow.
Do you remember how many people are there?
Um, it seems there are three, four people.
There were four people, um.
Yes.
Was the, um, the baseball player.
Um.
Tom, student magnet, since that being.
Yeah, that, that, no, that guy's about, years, I mean, I'm good with all, I mean, good with a lot, and, I mean, is there some?
Which means that they'll be replaced soon as they re-.
Right, that's what I'm looking at, I was thinking about, okay, if all of a sudden somebody else comes back in.
Is there some other thing we should pass, we're looking at to not even, that, that different form of this board somehow? Like, what do other cit, citizens do, if they gotta get?
Uh, do you, how honest do you want it to be?
Pretty honest.
Most municipalities don't have Art Board. But I've been understood that's very, it's an important committee to you guys, Grafton, where Melissa's from, they head at Art Board, um, so it's like, I've kind of heard of.
Well, what if they didn't have an Art Board rule of process, then it would go to the scope of your, uh, uh.
Yeah, I mean, a lot.
In your subdivision.
Yeah, I would say, a lot, a lot more would be tied to your ordinances, your developers agreement, reliance on staff, and that there's anything that, and again, you guys would decide this, um, that would be an issue, it would go before the plant commission. So like the city of West Bend, those sorts of things, these, these kind of questions that our court addresses, is handled in the plant commission.
Then we even need to have Art Board.
That is a policy decision for you best.
Have to suffer discussion.
If we do that, then we'll have more responsibility to determine how to do it. Because those needs need to be satisfied, and so they would just have to satisfy them in time.
Who's on the plant, there are seven on the plant commission, correct? Do we have a comment on any of them, three forums there?
Well, a forum would be four of the seven.
Okay, right, so what's your saying, the same here, so maybe that's something we really need to look into. Six, seven members on Art Board? Oh, it's like, Art Board, have a chance to have four show up.
I think, I think dress the ass is just trying.
Well, we can, if you guys don't mind, we can probably have that discussion at a, at a different meeting.
Right.
Um, if we already am to call a question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right, looks like there's two nays, ayes have it, motion carries. All right, we will move on, um, this next motion is to appoint Bo, Robert Bonzak as an alternate member to the Art Board. So just clarification, he was a member of the Art Board in my home. Is not. Portion of approval to all, probably, obviously, I think, to the profit number to the other Architecture Board.
Thank you.
All right, have a motion, a second, discussion?
Bob's been answered, like, thirty-five years. So he'd like to be a month.
Well, I would say, if I can, that there's something that the Art Board does compared to the plant commission, that's different. You know, I mean, they don't dictate certain things during construction or setbacks, and you can do, you know, you can go through the wrong with the stuff, stuff, but before we would get rid of our board, like Joshua and his, his, but need for, um, that would all have to be used as, too, but I know all of them. That would be good.
Any other discussion? All right, then I will call the, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, I'm gonna see. Okay, uh, the next has to do with transient merchants, and actually, I'm gonna hand this one, uh, off to Chris to do a little bit of background on this, just to discuss what was there and what it wasn't, um, if we could do that.
I was actually gonna hand it off to our village clerk.
Yeah, well, there we go.
Okay. So this came up, we have two transient merchant permits outright now, one is expired. Um, they, as of right now, they're good for thirty days. Um, we suggest, um, moving this, um, permit and the application process more in line with, um, the rest of our permitting, our annual permitting process, like alcohol and cigarettes, um, and food license, stuff like that. Um, so it would, we suggest making it good from July first to June thirty, June thirtieth. Um, and, um, so this would make it more convenient for, um, the people who utilize the, um, permit the most. Um, right now, we have one for a food truck and one for an ice cream truck, um.
I'll just note, the other change is in right beginning, section two, um, you had a little bit more descriptors there. The concern by the attorney is, if I put this politically correct, that there might be biases in place if we ask for that information and for whatever reason you might deny, or we might deny this license, um, the attorney didn't want to put us at that kind of risk. So that part scratched off, and we only ask for the date of birth of the.
Which would be enough information for the marshal to conduct the back, background check while being placed.
And one of that part was there just to mostly put a more variety of people, so, citizen, farmer, and payers.
Yeah.
Five foot, six, round here, three hundred pound guy walking around.
That's where, that's their vacuum salesman shop.
Or a bug sale.
Bug sale. I thought, I thought, I want to go and go around the village today. Probably has a walk. Five, six, or whatever.
So it would allow then, or our vacuum salesmen to have access to walk the village then for a whole year versus just thirty days. Instead of just the thirty days.
So why are we doing this again? Why are we increasing it to, just make it easier for them?
Yep, 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 I mean, you know, a good example of, Tony's is here, right? Do you really, does he really wanna come in every month to apply for something?
Before, I want him to be here, yes, I said, very, and it was full, I was in business, I'm not alive. I was never considered, and it's been, that were a final order, the war was, it's very, so, that was not, I have a call, it's like, maybe, or, I'm, it's very, it's not really good, it is, or, 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 or. Right, they say, uh, this is not what the, like, like, I, severe, right, but, but I've seen, I'm in this room, one thirteen. And they have the order to show up, and, and they drop the gamble on, amen, amen, at the moment. Both, these are all basically coming in, making a lot.
Well, running a business that, in the village.
In the village.
Yeah.
Years.
Right, but, I mean, to run a business in the village, according to our ordinances, on that property, it would have to be your property, correct?
At least the property from the.
Well, see, it's.
Somewhere in the work is whatever, things, I mean, and, and, you're, you're.
So.
No. So I'll just add, no current board can bind a future board, so, so I, I'm not disputing his pop, you're absolutely correct, I'm sure that that happened, you know, ten, eleven years ago, uh, but that doesn't really come into play with what we're talking about tonight. The definition of a transient merchant is a merchant's business that comes and goes to a set location, or, throughout, throughout the municipality. So again, door, door salesman, it's asking for a truck, it is food trucks, even if they have a sta, you know, a standalone location, that is the definition of a transient merchant, cause he's coming and going.
Transient mer, merchants, clearly, done with him, and then.
Toys, and there's an ice cream truck.
And where?
There's an ice cream truck, that's awesome, I can.
That basically doesn't stop.
Yeah. So if you guys, again, that, what's being ta, discussed tonight, maybe doesn't address Mr., Mr. Tony's, uh, concern, um, but that could be something we can look into, right? If you wanna change or maybe be more, be more specific, what the definition of transient merchant is, um, to allow him to not be one, you guys, we can look into that too.
I think, yeah, I would be interested in that. Right, and I was just gonna say, I'd be interested at some point, like, and again, to Chris's point, this is just talking about the, the range, right, of dates, but I would be interested in looking in the future to see if we can find what, um, what that would look like.
Very, 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 I feel like, very, 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 it's great, it's all in the, on, usually have it all on the wall.
Yeah.
Yes, we can do prayer.
Right. Sure.
No, I wouldn't, um, so.
Even though.
But it tasted delicious.
No, I, I recall what you're saying, and that's the way it came down.
Mm-hmm.
Um, oh, I don't know, he's, he's got a story to do, and it's unreal, it's really one of them, but he has a place that he leases, that he has permission to be there, and then.
That seems like, that someone leases the, uh, specific spot, and conducts business out of that very specific spot.
Mm-hmm.
I think that would be.
Here, there, yeah.
Okay.
On, this is very, very, like, a concept, one, not here, I could pull it forward. From the middle and then by the mercy of God, and then with our, we get revenge, and then, and then, you know, and the revenge that's over in the past. My, I'm just gonna, I'm just, if you're bad, you say, keep, or, or, and, and, I, it's like, it's a time, that, yeah. Well, I'm just gonna, okay, so, I don't know what.
Hey, I, well, you guys, I am gonna interject here, I just wanna make it very clear that we are actually not, we're, no offense to you, we're, we're not talking about that issue at the moment, I do wanna stick to the agenda, so right now, what we're talking about is increasing that time for the permit to be from one month to twelve months period.
Well, I'm not comfortable with having the vacuum senior salesman have license for, for, which is what has passed. We could have, to carry, we could have that kind of thing, and a merchant who leases his property, and there's only open ones here. The timeline, I mean, it doesn't, um, the, the gas station doesn't own the property, you leave it, it, it leases it from a, totally. So it's the same thing, it's the same, they're open one off.
The, just so you know how this is handled in other communities, so right now, as a transient merchant, if you wanted to, you, you could park at other spots throughout the village, right? Say, hey, I'm gonna be at this street today, I'm gonna be at this street the next day, right? So the transient merchant allows him to do that. So what other municipalities do for what he's talking about is conditional use, so there'd be a conditional use permit to say that, no, part of your conditional use is that you have to stay, you can only operate on this property within this time, and all of that, so that's probably what was granted.
That was a conditional use, that issue, so.
Well.
We, we need to.
Yep.
Recently before, um, I think I've looked at table, it's, we're not tailing it to fourth one action, but, until we get more information.
A second.
I mean, there's no fire agreement, no, we have to get this thing.
Absolutely not. I have a question, is there, I don't know, but it's in, I didn't read the entire language. Are we narrowing this down of food merchants? I mean, cause, I mean, to me, that's what this.
And I think that's.
I mean, I mean, it's not for vacuum.
Right.
Salesman, or someone selling, selling, uh, gifts and knives or something like that.
Right.
This is just for food. Is, is the language narrowed down to that already, or?
Was that?
The cupcake shop.
I was gonna ask for.
The cupcake, I think they're, they're familiar, like, a tank. And a food truck in, on some, in my, it's a, it's a different kind of business than the, the gift store, so.
Can I, can I ask whoever, Don, did you table it? Yeah, so in your motion to table, and you could specify when you want to come back, but also, if, you, I would like you to give some direction to staff that the two licenses that we have don't lapse at the end of this month. So if you could add some caveat that all the licenses we currently have are good until we solve this issue, that would help, so I don't have to bug him, and I don't have to bug the ice cream truck, and. Yeah, so that's why I would just. Yep. Yes. Which is why I would like you to amend your motion.
While there's, um, the, 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 you're so. It's very.
And I think that's. And I think that's where we need to.
Yeah, well, I have food trucks that wanna be at, uh, Freedom Park or something, but. We have a cupcake truck, that, we have a ice cream truck that goes around town, with all kinds of music and stuff, you know? That's the kind of this license that would be similar to yours.
Right, it's not at all that, conditions.
Right. So. All right, so my motion to, my motion to is postponed, um, is to obtain that which, we can come up with the two different categories for merchants, and also, we would have those who hold a current license when this goes down, their license is good to the end of the year. So your visitors are already gonna have to, you know, and.
And you go that twelve months, and then just move on and adjust.
Right, we got a motion in a second, and I would rather. I would rather do it once correctly, how we're gonna do it, and be done with it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not ready.
I understand where he's coming from. We gotta do something, right?
I don't remember if it was a condition, you.
Right, but we'll have to just grab. Oh, yeah. All right. So we table this, are we gonna need this poor man gaming here?
No, we're saying.
Okay, he'll still be good till slot.
He'll be good for you.
Okay. So, I have that. You're amending your motion like that, or just, that's what?
Yeah, did you get that second?
Got the motion?
I haven't, yes, I mean, we don't have a second yet, unless Tiffany, I will second.
Okay, so I have a motion in a second. I'm gonna call the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye, name.
All right. Are we moving on? All right, the next item is looking at ordinance twenty, twenty-three, seven, which is pertaining to the permitting of fences within the village. Um, I'm actually gonna have, I'm gonna have Don talk about this a little bit, we had looked at, um, fencing, and if it was appropriate to be in Art Board, and I know that you guys have kind of all talked about it in Art Board to figure out what the, what the actual requirements or the recommendations or the requirements would be from the board.
Um, yeah, we discussed this, um, in the last, well, maybe two and a half years, something like that, all of the fences come to Art Board, and they're, this isn't part of anything, you know, to the most part, people have been coming, and with their, that, and, 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 you look at it, we say, well, you can only come this far, it's like twenty hours, and, and, whatever, and it goes, and, and, you know, so, um, we got to a point now where, um, we're building a lot of fences, and we have a lot of meetings where we pay the Art Board to come to the, to hold the meeting, um, sometimes two times a month, and that's, that's a good expense. We, we decided that, um, we're laying most of the responsibility on the building inspector, and a change of ordinance so that the things that we would require or mention to the person in turn would be in the ordinance, the, the different, uh, requirements and materials and stuff like that, and they would get a permit from the building inspector, which would actually, you know, but the building inspector would get that permit, and approve the fence that they're gonna build, and then go back and inspect, and that's for a few, a few values, and, and, so that will take most of the fences off of the back of, of the Art Board, and, um, they set on the building inspector. they set on the building inspector. The first, the building inspector, you send the, the permits and a master drawing or whatever, go to John. And John will then send you on that component to, and you would just use that.
And that's why I like the Art Board, because they can look at what you're trying to do. For instance, down, downtown here with, uh, the chain link fence. Um, between properties and things like that. I mean, it, I agree that there should be a guideline of, uh, what materials and, uh, height and everything that's already in there. But, um, in certain circumstances, I mean, you can't just, because it's your flat line, just throw up a fence. I, I mean, the Art Board is very crucial in, in some of that. Um, to have a general, uh, practice of what your fence looks like and go ahead and build it. Can you imagine that? Yeah, this is what they said I'm supposed to do, and then I'll say, well, no, it's not right, then.
Well, and I think, you know, to the point that Don was making, I think it, it, yeah, it becomes, what are you gonna do, you have to submit to the building inspector, you know what I mean? It's not like, we were talking about pink and purple fences, right? You can't just go ahead and throw up a pink or a purple fence whenever you want to, nilly willy. If that's the case and you want to, then it becomes something that has to be discussed. Um, and, and would go before Art Board at that point. So, that's kinda.
Pink and purple babies are gonna get, the height of a fence, right?
Well, but, yeah, exactly. So something out of the ordinary, whatever.
But the point is, is that the Art Board, just at least in my little time here, they've been doing a lot of rubber stamping. And really, and that's what you pay us for, I mean, we could do the rubber stamping, if we've got anything outside of the ordinance or weird requests, then yeah, then the Art Board can.
And again, not that it's the most crucial thing in the world, but like Don was saying. It costs, it costs us quite a bit of money, right? If you're paying all the citizen members and all that stuff to be on the board, you have a meeting, and then you don't collect anything else, you're actually losing money on, on the, there's no permitting. As far as, you know?
Right, right.
So, it's kind of a.
I agree with you. I'm just saying that, you know, you got fences and then you also have the garages that, uh, uh, the Art Board goes through too, that I'm myself, I'm gonna be going through. And I appreciate that, um, so.
Adjust the fences, can we add a chain link fence? Cause it wasn't on the list before, we had, we thought, well, there's, there's nothing on a chain fence. And was, that wasn't in the previous ordinance. And shattered fences and stuff like that. Anyhow, this is, uh, what the Art Board considered would be a better way of doing the same thing.
And that fee is an adjustment, what? That's what we're basically gonna get then, or not? The fifty dollar fee?
Yeah.
And then they present.
That will cover the cost of, of the building.
They'll have, they'll have drawings and stuff. Do all this stuff and present it right to you guys.
Mm-hmm.
More out of that, yeah.
Plus, we took out the, uh, if you wanna put a fence on your general, to the rest of the community, we took that out of the ordinance.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome. You can be leaving those.
Haven't done since I put her on.
Well, beans.
We're recording, anyway. Okay, so if, uh, if somebody would like to make that motion, um, to entertain it, that'd be great.
Real, real quick for your crew beds, cause I, at least the copy that I have isn't updated, in section uh, three B, uh, regarding to decorated fences. There is a shall not exceed, currently says ten feet in height, is that what yours still says?
Oh, yeah, we had, uh.
The Art Board changed it to the forty-two inches, Don?
Forty-two inches, or three and a half. That's the standard top of the post.
Mine says forty-two.
Okay.
So, Don, can I ask you a question?
Hmm?
Um, between commercial fence, uh, like, uh, a, uh, class B building compared to residential. Um, you can go up to twelve feet. And that's what the fifty, you're, you're talking about residential fence, it's not not business or commercial fence.
Right. What's the next?
This section is for residential fence.
Okay.
There's another section in the ordinance pertaining to that.
The Art Board did discuss though, that for residential property with a budding or commercial property, I asked the Art Board, would you want to see it at, uh, for, you know, a higher height? Um, and Art Board said, no, they, they want the standard height throughout regardless of what your budding neighbors have.
Well, I don't agree with that either.
Just send you.
Alright, no matter how high you go to see those, they're still gonna come. And crap all over.
On that one. I am still looking for, I believe, the motion, because.
Did we, did we? Nope, I don't want to do that.
I don't think it's really involved, it's a cut and drag, but you just want.
There's a lot more teeth to your ordinance than it previously was.
I would make a motion.
Just need a second.
Oh, who's first, if I am, can't.
You can second, Bruce, go ahead.
Yeah, you can. Alright, so I have a motion in a second. Any more questions or discussion? Alright, I'll call the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and misses. Alright, uh, next we have, um, we're looking for a motion to approve an application for absentee certificate envelope sub grant. Um, maybe it'd be helpful if the clerk could update us as to.
Um, so with recent, um, court cases and, um, updates to state law, all of our absentee ballot envelopes that we currently have, um, are no longer in compliance with state law. Um, so we have to throw them all away and buy them all again. Um, the next year is a four election cycle, um, so, um, based on our last four election cycle, I calculated that we need, um, over two thousand ballot envelopes, um, that will total about three hundred and sixty-three dollars. Uh, the sub grant would cover two hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty-eight cents. Um, there is, uh, an MOU that, um, the village would need to agree to that concluded in a package um, between the village and the Wisconsin Elections Commission. Uh, it's pretty straightforward, um, we have to use all of the funds given to us, um, only for these envelopes. Uh, and anything that we don't use, we have to return at the end of twenty twenty-four. Can I answer any questions?
What if we decided to answer through this?
Then, just like the other grants, uh, we wouldn't get bad money.
That would come out of my.
So we would still have to budget for and, and spend like that.
Why is this change necessary, can anyone update me on the background of this?
It's necessary because the state changed their guidelines and we have no choice.
Yeah.
Unfunded management.
So, like, places and court cases. Yeah, it's two different topics. And so what changed specifically on the interior envelope is the, um, you have to, there's a, um, a wit, uh, um, affidavit that absentee voters have time saying that it, you know, it just says, you know, I am who I say I am, I filled out a ballot. And here is, you know, my information and the other's disinformation, that language has changed. I haven't seen the new language.
Show the acting, I don't think that's even solidified, because they're going to the municipality.
That's right, and so I can know today, um, still soliciting opinions, um, so I hope that they hurry. Um, so even, um, you know, even if you don't approve it, even if we have to, um, budget for this with our own dollars, um, I still have to throw away everything that we have, um, in storage. Um, which is a real bummer because I did just purchase, um, extra for our next one.
It's your election committee.
I may get a motion, uh, through that.
I was talking about.
Yeah, so, yeah, so it's mine, but, yeah. I'm gonna throw it all away, and we gotta buy it anyhow, what, uh, what do we think?
I have.
We're just changing language. Hook, we're gonna shut door away, gets a new, with a new sentence.
And again, we're gonna have to use these envelopes, this is just for the grant, the sub grant, correct?
Yes, so even if this, even if you guys don't approve this and you don't want me to move forward with it, you still have to purchase the envelopes.
Yeah, we're applying for a grant.
Yes.
For a two hundred and twenty-five dollars and fifty cents.
Fifty cents.
Oh, it's not seven. Oh, did it? Oh, in the MOU.
I know you were basically, I was gonna spend it on just.
Because we.
Okay, so I do have a motion in a second then, is there any other discussion that needs to be used?
Nope.
Oh, I want to say, I, uh, I understand how with Joff's reservation is, all this.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I think it's something that it almost seems like something we have to do, so I, I don't know. I, I understand your reservation. The vast elections.
They always push, that's the position they have to.
What's that?
They always put you in this position, they have to.
Yeah, turn down your head and pull trigger. That's the way I feel about it, so they put guns here.
Alright, I'm gonna call them, the, uh, question, and everyone's okay with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with one name. Alright. Next, we're going to talk about the hot asphalt paving of water main areas.
I guess start this one off and then maybe Eric can add some additional stuff. This is coming back to you, we, we looked at this, we had presented three different bids to you. Um, the direction from the board was to kinda explore a couple options, uh, look at Dollar General, when they had their contractors in, see if they would give us a better deal. Um, and/or to go to our lowest bidder, bidder who was Gear Rocks and see that between our staff, if there are some cost savings that we could do. Um, to the first point, Dollar General actually was using our highest bidding contractor already. And it was not a cost savings by using them while they were in town. Um, so that deferred then to the second option, which was exploring our lowest bidder, which is Gear Rocks, which you had before you. Um, Eric and his team looked at the options, they nixed, I believe it was one of those areas, right? You were nicked. Oh, they did. Okay. Well, originally, we were gonna look at not doing one of them. Um, the bid before you has, has all of them in there, but this is with, um, our guys doing the prep work, so that takes, you know, time and effort of staff and equipment to do it. Uh, but it provides a little bit of cost, cost savings this before you.
Can you remind us what the original bid was from Gear Rocks?
Eighteen seventy.
Do you remember off the copy, right?
Uh, Gear Rocks is.
Sixteen?
Fifteen seventy.
Yeah.
My, my question is, is the offsetting cost and the increase in labor on our end to do these projects work?
I think it's just looking at, you know, one double cap available right now. You have to either bake it to the county or, or to dispose of the asphalt. And rather than, you guys all need to do this, for a good amount.
And then, if I read correctly, you guys are gonna do the grading and everything on it too?
Yeah, we'll make it graded.
Do you have the equipment to roll it and prep it and have it up to Gear Rocks standards before they pave it?
Yeah, I think we don't have this money to do it.
My, my concern about us doing prep work on it is not only the time, but you walk and see, I'll do the prep work on it, Dan, you probably run into this with construction on time.
Just did it.
They, it's not done up to the company's standards, that's gonna come in and do it, and then you're gonna get charged off noseboard anyways, cause they gotta fix it or redo it. That's my only concern, us doing it internally is, is everything there to be able to do it and do it up to their standards so they don't recharge us again, and then we're at the same position.
So we're looking at roughly like a five grand cost difference.
So all that being said, if you read my memo, my opinion has not changed from the last meeting, I would not recommend that you even move forward with it just because the amount of cost that we've already incurred in the water utility because of these breaks. Um, I mean, if you wanna go forward with it, we'll find the money, we'll make it work within the water utility, but just know that that fund is already, um, you know, at a tough position.
I think a motion of denial bids and, uh, puts a project on the budget from here.
I would say.
I mean, you could, or you just not take action and fail for lack of action too, whatever you wanna do.
Well, the motion.
The general rule is to not make a motion for that anyway. Well, we have the bid deals that it's.
It's just a bid, really?
Right.
Yeah, that's a bit, uh, I hope, well, unless you're taking comments, is, one of them is in the business that I would highly recommend fixing. And if you look at that quote, that is probably a third of the cost. So, this guy's apartment is been ripped up since beginning of January. We have home compared. So, you're in a business that before it was not.
So you're talking, uh, the third of that cost is off of the.
Yeah, the, the cash is huge, I mean, that's.
Wow.
That's the.
That's not the way it was presented.
That's the two-two-five North Milwaukee Street one?
Yes.
Yeah, that's three thousand eight hundred of the twelve thousand something.
So if you're gonna deny the whole asphalt in front of it, uh, then I would look at fixing that, I mean, that the part guys that is part of that, fixing it.
We got cold next on there now?
No, there's none, it's dry.
It's dry. Was that the one in, uh, in the town?
Just see what I have.
I looked at Matthew, there, another thing of asphalt in, the same old one of the branches was that was part of, paired up, fixed it. The actual interest in the same business. And that was from twenty-two. And I would say that it pushed off the next, when you put it back, and, I don't know, we're gonna push it back, yeah. And then it keeps expanding, so I think we added another four peanuts that passed from the previous.
Now, would you compare with the administration's recommendation, or would you just?
Well, I guess I look at is, if it hasn't been fixed and we plow it, the one on asphalt, uh, the man will stick like this. So, we, we better repair it for a record. So you better, if it gets paid for it now, or if you, you add a new order, maybe start.
The, I was gonna touch on the parking lot, I mean, assuming that it's under, you know, five thousand, maybe just address that area, in your, in your quote, it's three thousand eight hundred, right? Um, that would be low enough within our, um, within our purchase policy that we could handle that interval. So that wouldn't have to come back for you guys. So you could, what I'm saying is, you could deny this bid and then still ask that we work on that specific incident.
Eric, that manhole is that within that area?
Uh, that was something you're gonna fix, the bid was just in paper.
Yeah, well, you, when, when you hit it with the plow, it's gonna come. Nine hundred and fifty bucks.
The plow.
And I get it, I mean, that break at that part, uh, was eighteen dollars and a half. That was a few break. Two of those days. And it was on hundred, 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 stall and, four years.
That was what, three or three after each other, wasn't it?
That's a whole story, I'd forget that.
How long has that been?
The fact.
Hold passed, or passed?
The one that. We never.
Or how, I'm sorry, how long has that one been filled? That one's probably right, in the business. When did that break happen?
I think it says, January December.
I think it was from first year.
Jason.
Actually, Jason's first.
Yeah, that was, yeah, Jason's.
Alright. So, right now, I had a motion out there that was, uh, denying everything. Right. Did we have a second on that?
Yeah, I second it, it was for the bid. But, what, um, Christopher's saying is that you guys can do what you need to do internally with what you have, correct?
Yeah, if the direction here today is, we should fix a private property owner's parking lot, then I would agree with that.
Alright, with, with horse permission, always draw a motion, any objection?
I would be.
Okay, now, I would make a different motion to deny all bids and to do only the area that the public purse. the area that the public purse director is recommending. And I'm not sure if that's a great area in answer. You should also put those through then.
I mean, it's a typical things, I mean, for the manager. But the problem is, I have one traffic.
Okay, when you say you're gonna have to fix some of these before winter.
I mean, I don't have to take it all, then we'll get asphalt and then. But they, these happen anyways. I mean, they're, they're second thing. One, because it was never finished and we did it. And if you guys drive up to down night, then you can tell them one that are people patched and throw it back over.
That's all.
In the next twenty-five years.
I guess that's, as the partner was saying, we do to cut the cost of that. One, because we got, we have a going on and I have one guy dedicated to it. And then we have one of that, we're sleeping right about. I know there's a little bit on hard end for the warrior gridiron football thing that's. I mean, these things are adding up, but alone without a clarifier project that is gonna be the. You know, skates will come and stay on it.
I did that some true.
So again, right now, we've got an updated motion for denial bids, it sounds like, and to.
Didn't quite get there.
So you're just trying to.
Do not have a second on that, correct? Chris, if I was trying to make a point, to his point, you don't necessarily need to say that. You can include in your motion if you want to, so whatever action you guys want to do. And I believe Eric is getting at you would keep the two-two-five both Milwaukee Street number, three thousand eight hundred plus, that could continue to survive.
So what I could do then is reach out is, because of my relationship with the county guys, we have lease supply guys. If they can bring in equipment and help. I'm not sure how culture that would lead to outside contractors if they find out that. At least for that one.
Is that really relevant?
It might be, yeah. I mean, really, and we talked about, and I apologize, we forgot to mention this, but you have the right, as long as you reject all these bids, then we can go to the county and ask for help. But it would be improper for us to go to the county, kind of like, you know, around the contractors.
Right. They're really not satisfactory because they're more than we can. I know that's good accused, but they're, they're hiring them, they should.
I would second John's motion to deny all bids. He had that out.
Are we probably more trouble than there's.
I was.
If we deny all bids, can you contact the John Edgar and see if you'll help out and get that a topic?
But again, this is a ball on the towns. So when they say we're gonna be there tomorrow, we have to go. It was kind of like the Peyton Dublin or Delta Center. They told me on Tuesday that they're doing it and their payments have, or there's nobody else in time.
Yeah, so a lot of people probably have a question, some spots in the field already.
But that's why I would solicit the county that they lease by the guys who can bring the equipment back.
So that would be appropriate, not just deny all this.
They just deny all this.
Because then we can go to the county and say, hey, our board denied all of these bids. Please, can you help us?
There never used to be a problem until one month.
It's a July ninety-nine. All bids.
What have they said? No. That's where one.
Then we have July twentieth.
Then I guess the last part would be. I think the fraud that monster, you know, has to solve it.
Yeah, well, I think all that truck can't run right now.
Well, the trucks go.
I agree.
So I can take all that stuff off and we can run the county down.
Well, let's see what we can accomplish in the next couple of weeks, talking to the county and go from there.
Yep.
If that works. So do we have, do I hear a motion to deny all bids, pretending?
A motion to deny all bids.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I don't even wanna ask it. Is there any other discussion? Alright, I'm gonna call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Alright, next discussion, possible action on state update.
From the.
You can tell us, you can give us information right there.
Good. I know my goal is to push this off to make money for work. I will just schedule an update on the last and the forward billiards. We had two more failures in the scale. My resetting. So we lost half the data and we have a screen running the book on our boards. So when water can change or whatever, now we have them all the time to come in and adapt the scales.
And how important are those graphs and your data? How important is that? They need to know that.
You have to report to it.
Yeah, everything needs to be recorded and we're completely reliable as guys.
I have a, I have a question. I'm just looking at this fiscal impact. It says unbudgeted capital expenses in the water sewer wants a forty-sixty split. Does that need to be forty-sixty split between the two of them?
No, is that a percentage that?
Water and also ground on the scale?
Yeah.
I understand.
It was more so because the sewer utilizes it more than the water, so we felt a forty-sixty split of the cost.
My question is, we have a presentation or at least a discussion about the clarifier repair coming up? And I'm wondering if the impact of that discussion might be something that we can say now we could use something. Do you get what I'm saying? Kind of sort of?
Interesting.
Okay, so.
You just wanna skip to that agenda?
I'm wondering if we can skip to the, if it's okay with the board to skip to the clarifier repair and then move back to the state update. Alright, if that's okay with everybody, I'd like to, I'd like to do that. So if we could have an update on the clarifier repair.
So that I can give, as you all know, the clarifier broke in what can only be described as a freak accident. Over there, you guys have heard it before, so I won't say it again. We had Sable Mechanical come out and give quotes. That's in your packet there. There's two options. There's a complete replacement for a hundred thirty-seven thousand. And there's a repair, more of like a bandage fix for seventy-three thousand. Regardless of which option we do, you need to do it. Where I was blunt, saying that we don't need to do water main break patching, we do need to do the clarifier. There's no, you have no choice. The fund that we would utilize is your replacement equipment fund. That's sitting at five hundred, is it ten thousand now? No, five hundred plus thousand dollars. Those funds are there for this very reason, right, to replace equipment when this happens. That being said, though, I did look very diligently at an insurance claim. We went through that process. We just got details of that today. So what we are eligible for is that we, the village would pay a five thousand dollar deductible. And which would cover the minimum of the two options. So as in you have the complete replacement, one thirty-seven, or you could do the repair of seventy-three. The insurance company is willing to cover seventy-three thousand dollars with our five thousand dollar deductible. Whether we use that money to do the repair or whether we use it to do the complete replacement is up to us. Either way, we'll get reimbursed seventy-three thousand dollars. So in our mind, it seems like a no-brainer. We're gonna get a complete replacement for sixty thousand dollars by using our insurance claim and then using the funds.
We have to do the other one.
Yeah, right. So to me, the same, again, this is like a no-brainer. I would strongly recommend that you approve it. We would utilize those replacement funds and proceed with the insurance.
The people that do the clarifier, they don't have anything to do with the scale.
No, they're cheap, they're good.
I just didn't know. If it wasn't saving them.
I think maybe to what the vice president was getting at is that, again, if we didn't have that insurance claim, you guys would be paying. I would recommend to you that you do a complete replacement for a hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars. Thankfully, we don't have to do that, but there is a arguable savings there in our equipment that possibly could be utilized for.
That'd be big.
So again, we're just talking about the clarifier right now, obviously. The question is, do we want to just do the rehab and have the insurance pay for all of it, other than the five thousand dollars? Or do we wanna purchase the new one? That would have been the administrator's recommendation, even had we not had the insurance claim. The savings of sixty-some-one thousand, like I said, that could be in the head.
I would recommend you replace the whole thing brand new because everything that I look at from this village has been patched across the board.
Make that motion, I'll second it.
Are you making that motion?
Yeah.
Alright.
Bruce has that motion.
Alright, so we've got a motion and we have a second. Is there any other discussion on this? Alright, let's call all those in favor?
Aye.
I'm opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Hello, you cleared by. Alright.
Come on, Eric, where's the smile?
Alright, now we're gonna move back to agenda item G, so discussion and possible action on state update. So as Chris had said, this is where I was, I just had a light bulb kind of go on in my head, is if we are saving some of these funds on something that we would have been recommended to replace completely anyway out of the sewer replacement funds, is it appropriate for us to take that savings in our head and use it towards the state upgrade?
Can I just answer, DPW Director, do you know if we can use the equipment replacement funds at a allowable expense for the skaters?
Right.
The skater, I.
So just know the.
It is for.
Yeah.
Equipment. The good thing is, we don't have screens on the plan because each one of those screens can be.
So maybe it's appropriate to say to possibly table this till the July twentieth meeting and get more information?
Or you could just approve it contingent on, you know, these funds being available for that purpose, right? Because really, either way, we need to start, if you guys wanna proceed with this, we need to order these parts and get this set up. I mean, that's a huge part of what Eric didn't fill you guys in on. This is gonna take a while for them to get this all set up.
Eric, and if that fails, I mean, permanently, then you have to have someone there permanently, right? How does that work?
I think it would be airborne, just because we don't have control of everyone's. We're wearing out a brand, I can pull up the plant on our pole and see the path. If the scale fails, we can't. So we all come over to pump, we can pump it in the river or it's a fairly short.
Could we make a motion or could I make a motion to approve the data update pending what Eric finds out about that font that is available? Is that, right?
Nope.
To see if we can use them?
So if we can't use those.
Start pitching there. I mean, can't just, they can down the road.
From a technology standpoint, that's kind of my philosophy. This current system is running under Windows seven, which is unsupported by Microsoft. There are no security patches that have not been security patches for quite some time for that. This, being this out of date and not fixed is leaving us very vulnerable.
Hopefully, that's. If it was, you have to hear the mindset that expires.
There's my point.
Well.
It could be a lot worse than that.
So all that being said, based on the current motion, if those funds are, can't be used for this project, then we're not doing it, at least as of this month. And we would be coming back to you guys saying, you know, other options.
I don't think we can use, I thought funds either because that's a fee as we. We, we have to have speed, care for it. Unless we loan on it, and you pay the. I mean, there's a way to do it.
I thought the previous deployment I was at, we used part of four of those areas in the two oh seven. We had these programs that were functioning and had eaten all this company, we're not much of a system.
There's our.
We've been bottom there and it's like fifty-seven thousand, I hold for the scale. And that was three, I have to buy a monitor, license, I mean, so it's. If you touched it wrong or you want to bless something, it really is.
So we're talking a fifteen thousand dollar. Um. I think we should do that. Contingent on whether or not we can use the equipment in turnway. If that's not, our backup would be using market funds. Would that be the reason to do it?
I'm gonna tell you the same thing that I promised at every board meeting. There are no separate ARPA funds anymore. In the federal government's eyes, you have claimed all of your money as lost revenue. That's now intermingled with our capital fund. So the money's sitting there in your savings for you to use, just like any other hundred dollars.
I made a motion.
So.
They have this done.
So of those funds, which I remember like sixteen, seventeen thousand.
So your motion had the contingency?
Right now, his motion, I believe, has a contingency.
On, on public funds.
The equipment replacement fund, right?
But it would sum up the six or, I mean, I have our next project, right?
If we can't use those funds, then yes, we come back.
So if not, is it a connection?
But I think what Don's asking is, what's, what can be? We can, can we set up a can be? Right, if it's, we can't use that equipment replacement fund, I think what Don was asking, is it agreeable to the board to use?
Your reserves. You'd be using.
The reserves to.
You're saying that this is such an emergency that we okay you just to use your reserves outside of the budget?
Okay, great, yeah.
Okay, I'll second all of that. But I can't say it again.
Alright, I have a motion second then. Any other discussion? I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, now we're gonna do discussion and possible action on emergency backup power outfits of public works and utilities.
I'm moved to, I'm moved to put that in the twenty twenty-four budget. Not do it at this time.
Yeah, it'd be considered. You're giving staff direction that you would like to see it in the.
You know, even though with the backup power down there right now, you can run half the plant. I mean, but yeah, just throwing a new generator in there isn't gonna give you all the swap outs that you need to have. They have it supply both sides, but.
No, but you have.
You have one fifty hours plan and. It's definitely attractive, but I think the things that we got going right now, it is a big step forward.
We just.
I didn't catch the second. Who made the second?
Did we have a second?
Don made it.
Don made.
Don made the motion.
No, I meant to, Don made it second.
Okay, Bruce made the motion, Don made the second.
Alright, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
We're on the generator, just so we're up there.
Alright.
Yeah.
Alright. Alright. Was there any other?
And have we gotten more than one bid? Have we gotten more than one bid for the generator?
So you looked at the other app, but I think this is the only one that even qualifies, right?
Yeah, uh, I reached out to Peter Powers.
So we're on a jet back to.
Yeah, never got it. Uh, and I'm not, I'm not able to chase someone around with the. Uh, and Miller here is right in front of me, this. Well, if we're, we're in a force generator, he was on the generator. And it was, it's coming, generator, not given, but. Spends a lot of reason.
Yeah, I mean, Miller's gonna bid it, right? Yeah, let's just leave it there, and let him, um, bring in a new, a good bid. I mean, he's local, they're local, I mean, they're doing, if they're working with Ford in a surrounding area, that's where, where we want to stay.
And, uh, a lot of extensions, uh, some of that cost that's in that, and I had set ideas, there are panels and switches that have been knocked out since the album is here. Oh. So, it's basically a gut, because we don't know what works, we don't know what doesn't, we don't know why it's not. So we have this gut of that one, is that?
All those boxes are gonna have to get replaced. I think it was two boxes.
We should just get a Ford F-150 Lightning and just plug it in.
What's that?
Get one of those Ford F-150 Lightnings, we shouldn't be able to plug it in with a Ford.
Just be a Ford guy.
I would be suspicious if you couldn't tell. Alright, we have a motion in the second, uh, is there any other discussion?
Eric, could you have to, uh?
Motion to move it to the twenty-twenty-four budget.
So, just to be clear, that would be proper, the motion is to deny, and you're giving staff, um, the guidance that you would like to see it in the twenty-twenty-four.
Otherwise, the way it's written, we are moving it very buggy.
So, but Bruce, you made the motion, so you can't second it, Don already seconded it, so now we're gonna.
Don said something, maybe you would, well, you could take a step back.
I started off, I do, I didn't move it. If I made the motion, I could have made the second. Are you on that, we're on, you're on danger.
Yeah, on age.
Okay, so Don made the motion. Bruce seconded the motion, and now we're gonna change the motion.
Changing the motion there, John, John?
To deny.
No, he was just gonna push drop till twenty-four.
But it's, but it's not, but it's not, it's not proper of this board to do that, really, you're giving a recommendation to me and to the finance committee that when we consider the CIP budget for twenty-twenty-four, you would like to see this as a night. And that's fine, I understand that, it's already denied in the news.
Is that acceptable?
No, you can, we're gonna.
Are you good, Bruce?
Yeah.
Alright, we're good, I, I have a motion and a second, any questions, please? Uh, a couple of them. Alright, I'll call a question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We have correspondence, uh, looks like from St. John's regarding their campaign for a new playground. Um, and their fundraising efforts for that, so I encourage you to read through that, if you want. And, uh, if there's nothing else, I'm looking for items for you.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we have two items on that for the future, I got the transient stuff, we'll look into that for you. Um, and then again, we don't need to discuss right now, we don't need to open up a can of worms, but would you like us to look into art board elimination? That was discussed, so, we can, if you'd like. And, and to the point, it, this is gonna be, that'll be a bigger change, and you might not think about that, but to like Trusty Pappy's point, a lot of that control and siding and, you know, you think about all those things, where they, we're gonna have to reword into the plan commission zoning code. So just know that that's not gonna come back for you in two weeks, it's gonna, it's gonna take a little while.
Um, what you, uh, future.
That's where we are.
Okay. Um, this had nothing, I just wanna make it where people, I know Dollar Store just opened up the other day, and whether I'm doing this right or not. But I was coming up to Sitco, and there was, we have a yield sign there, um, for pedestrians, okay? There's no sidewalk, it runs like ten feet into the, uh, uh, PW, uh, Port Washington State Bay.
You're talking mobile, right?
Yes, mobile, sorry.
Okay, I just.
What it means, four bicyclists, young girls on bikes, one car was stopped, I'm like coming up, and I'm like. Across the road, I mean, there's nothing flashing, there's nothing there, I mean, when you get that west side, when somebody pulls around there, if there is a pedestrian coming across there, more importantly, there's no sidewalks down on High Line at all, on both sides.
In that area, yep.
So I'm just saying that. Yeah, I don't wanna see it happen, maybe we can reach out to Sable or, uh, um, Officer Marshall Lees. What they have to say about that crosswalk there, because that's gonna happen when schools coming, they're all gonna go around.
So I would, and I think Chris is gonna say the same thing, um, we went and we toured Dollar General today, and pretty much the same thing happened, with people running a property road, and um, there was a customer that was concerned about it, so we discussed it a little bit with Eric. Um, it being a county road, I don't know what authority we have to do anything there. Um, so we did already start having those discussions, so I'm looking into what we can and can't do there.
Softly narrowed too, even with the, with the dive out there, with the turn lane. You would have thought it would have been a little wider, but that's what I would have thought, because now there is no right lane going to your turn lane on two fifty-seven. It's a turn into the parking lot, or just right across the parking lot into the turn lane for fifty-seven. So, I'm just making it, people aware, for us, that, I mean, there's gonna be a lot of pedestrians, a lot of kids and stuff going down there.
There's a couple of those types of areas within the village, we've got one up by our house too, that's really dangerous for the kids riding their bikes, so, I hear ya.
The kids have a responsibility to look both ways and use their head out.
They do.
I mean, we can't depend on them.
Alright, is there? Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion.